Great afternoon, everyone. Aloha and welcome. Welcome to the Senate Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs. This is for our 315 reconsideration agenda. This is just a DM. This is having to do with SB 1379 related to emergency preparedness. This measure was previously heard on January 31st, 2025, and we're meeting to reconsider our previous decision. And this is just decision-making only, no public testimony. So having said that, for SB 1379, members in the general public, recommendation here is we are going to... recess. Reconvening the Senate Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs. Again, this is the 315 reconsideration agenda of SB 1379. Chair is going to recommend that we pass with amendments. First, we're going to add a new section to require the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, HAIMA, provide a report to the Hawaii State Legislature with information containing the following, but not limited to: Provide a plan by identifying types of community readiness centers, both public and private. In summary, we'd like to have HAIMA develop a plan that would contain a timeline of identifying emergency preparedness centers, public and private, use of funding sources, any partnerships with federal and county agencies, and community groups, and collaboration/communication with stakeholders. The plan should incorporate how HAIMA will utilize funding sources, if granted, to support emergency preparedness programs and working with stakeholders. Annual projected amount of funding based on sources of revenue, and any other relevant information about community readiness centers program. The report should be due no later than 20 days prior to the convening of the 2026 legislature. Also, on page 8, line 19, subsection 6, we're going to strike the number 5 cents and insert a blank amount. On page 9, line 21, subsection 4, strike 11.4% and insert a blank amount. And the committee report include the recommended amounts, as previously stated, on page 8, line 19, at 5 cents, and page 9, line 21, at 11.4%. On page 11, section 9, on lines 1 and 2, change the effective date to July 1st, 2077, and any other technical amendments. With those amendments, any further discussion? Short recess. Okay, reconvening the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs. Again, this is for SB 1379. I did go over the previous suggested amendments, but just to clarify, the recommendation is to reconsider the committee's previous action on this measure, which was on January 31st, 2025. And further, the committee's recommendation is now to pass with amendments, as previously stated. Any further discussion on the recommendation? Okay, if not, Acting Vice Chair Fukunaga for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Senator Wakai is excused. I vote aye. Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Decore?
Aye.
Your measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much. We will... Are we allowed to roll into our other 315 IT?
Yes, you can, Chair.
Okay. Members, we're going to roll into our 315 Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs Agenda hearing. First on our agenda is SB 1364. This is Making Emergency Appropriations for Law Enforcement Personnel Costs. Keep in mind for the testifiers, we submitted testimony, we do have that, and your time limit will be one minute. First, from the Director of Budget and Finance, Director Solivero, or Deputy Director.
Hi, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Sabrina Nasr. I'm the Deputy Director for Department of Budget and Finance. And we're here to support this bill, which is an emergency appropriation that provides fringe benefit appropriations to the Judiciary and the Department of Accounting and General Services. Our testimony provides some proposed amendments, but we actually have some updates to those numbers that we'll provide to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Fong, testifying for Department of Law Enforcement.
Good afternoon, Chair Elefante and the rest of the committee and the Public Safety and Military Affairs. So my name is Russell Fong, the ASO for the Department of Law Enforcement. And we stand in support of our written testimony. Also want to ask you to say other things about, not only we have to fund the emergency appropriation for DAGs and it also... Judiciary. Not only that, we have to increase our ceiling for the Department of Law Enforcement. So I'll be there for any questions if you need it.
Thank you, Mr. Fong.
Thank you.
Keith A. Regan, Comptroller for DAGs.
Chair, members of the committee. Keith Regan, Comptroller for the Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand our written testimony in support of this matter.
Okay, testimony and support from DAGs. That completes our registered list of testifiers. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on SB 1364? If not, members, questions? Question for Budget and Finance? Deputy Director Nasr, are the amounts different from what's contained in your written testimony?
Yes, they are. Though I believe they'll be slightly higher, and we'll try to email that to the committee by the end of this week.
Okay, so you don't have a...
We don't have the estimates yet.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any further questions, members? Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next item, which is SB 1451 relating to Critical Infrastructure. First, from the Office of Information Practices, Director Carlota Amarino. Next is for DLE, Frank Pace. Yes, please come forward and identify yourself, please.
My name is Jenny Collins. I'm the Chief of Planning and Operations for the Office of Homeland Security under the Department of Law Enforcement. And we stand by the DLE testimony and support.
Okay, thank you. And Ben Krebs, on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Ben Krebs. I'm with the Public First Law Center. You have our written testimony. We respectfully oppose this bill. Basically, it's not necessary. The information that the bill seeks to protect is already protected by the Uniform Information Practices Act, Chapter 92F, Section 133. So again, the information is already protected. The bill is not necessary. Thank you.
That completes our list of registered testifiers on SB 1451. Members, any questions? Yeah, Senator Fukunaga?
I have a follow-up question for OIP. This is Director Amarino here? No.
Okay. Any other question, members? I have a question for Mr. Krebs. So thank you so much. We did get your testimony and believe you had it in opposition, but you had a suggested language. Is that correct?
Correct. So if the committee is intending to pass this measure out, we do offer a much tighter definition of critical infrastructure information.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, move on to our next item, which is SB 1452 relating to the Uniform Controlled Substance Act. First on our list is Kathy Seal, testifying for the Department of Law Enforcement, our Deputy Director.
Good afternoon, Chair Elefante and Senators, members of the committee. Jared Ridula, I'm the Deputy Director for Law Enforcement. This is the annual bill that's presented to the legislature to update and harmonize our drug laws with the federal drug law. Every year, changes are made because of new and emerging drugs. It's beneficial to pass this bill because it allows law enforcement to take action on these new and emerging drugs. And many times as well, new medications become available, and then this bill would allow members of our community to use those medications. Members, in my testimony, in our written testimony, we are proposing an amendment. And that is because we were notified recently that the federal government, when they changed the drug law, they misspelled one of those very long scientific names for a drug. We in turn followed and passed a law scheduling a substance with that incorrectly spelled name. I realize in our testimony that I hadn't offered you language to clean that up. And so I'd like to ask the committee for consideration in allowing us some time so that I may get you that language to clean that up.
Okay, thank you. Next on our list is Daniel Hugo, testifying for Prosecuting Attorney, City and County Honolulu.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Department of Prosecuting Attorney strongly supports this bill. We have pointed out in our testimony the specific links where the federal government made its findings regarding medical use as well as addictive risk. And so we would encourage the committee to review that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hugo. That completes our list of registered testifiers. Anyone else that wishes to testify on SB 1452? Not members, questions? Question for Deputy Director Ridula? Yes, thank you. And thank you for offering the proposed amendment. Yeah, when I reviewed this, the proposal was to change HRS 32916 and not necess... Not, your proposal is to change 32916 and not necessarily 32914, which the bill proposes. So would DLE be offering amendments to change what's articulated in 16 as a new section?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions, members? If not, move on to our next bill. SB 1149 relating to Hate Crimes. First, from the Attorney General's Office, Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom for the department. Department supports the intent of this bill. However, we just note that currently the department is already transitioning to, from kind of our older system, statistical crime reporting system, to a much more robust, newer national incident-based reporting system, also known as the NiBIRS program. And that program already covers hate crime-type data. As written in our testimony, we're providing, we're transitioning to that program. In addition, providing like a public dashboard that they're on, working on. It's going to be completed September 30th, 2025. That's projected. And that should provide a lot more transparency on the type of hate crime data that's occurring in the state. Lastly, we just point out about the mandated training in this bill. I think currently, I can't speak for all police departments, but I know for Honolulu, they do do hate crime training for the officers as well as annual-type training. I think it's bias-based training. So would just stand in the restorative testimony.
Thank you, Deputy Attorney General Tom. Daniel Hugo, prosecuting attorney.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Daniel Hugo for the Department of Prosecuting Attorney, City and County of Honolulu. We would also support a transition to NiBIRS reporting. That would allow not only us to make consistent year-on-year comparisons, but also allow us to compare our state data with other states. So that would allow us to actually get information from the data we're collecting.
Thank you. Sandy Hardjo Livingston, Commissioner for Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission, on Zoom. Aloha and welcome.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm Dr. Sandy Hardjo Livingston. And the committee, I'm sorry, the Commission on LGBTQ+ Affairs supports SB 1149. SB 1149 addresses these issues by requiring the collection of analysis of all reported crimes. That includes those that are not charged for criminal charges. This bill improves transparency and allows law enforcement to track investigation of hate crimes effectively. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Livingston. Michael Golichu, Jr., testifying for Pride at Work Hawaii, on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Michael Golichu, Jr. He and pronouns. Thank you for hearing this bill. 24 years ago, I was before this body advocating for the Hate Crimes Law that we have on our books. And I can tell you, after 24 years, it is time for revisions, and we need to update the law. We do not have the data that we need because, as we pointed out in our testimony, the only time hate crime is actually recorded is if they catch the perp, they try, and they actually use the enhanced sentencing that comes with the Hate Crimes Law. We don't know how big the problem is out there when it comes to hate crimes because we don't have the data. I'm ecstatic to hear that they're moving to a better system. But if we don't have the data, there's nothing to put into the system. So as a person who has unfortunately been the focus of several hate crimes, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions about my personal experiences on dealing with this and making sure that we get the right data out there for everybody so we can actually attack this issue head-on. Mahalo.
Thank you. Abby Simmons, testifying for Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Mahalo for the opportunity to let me testify. I'm testifying in strong support of the bill on behalf of the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. I think the need for this type of reporting is self-evident. And I'd also like to say, we stand on our written testimony. Mahalo for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Simmons, testifying for Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Carolyn Martinez Golichu, President and Founder, testifying for Rainbow Family 808, on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Beatrice DiRigo in support. Gary Corderi, testifying for Aloha Freedom Coalition, in opposition, on Zoom.
Also not present on Zoom, Chair.
Jamie Detwiler, testifying for Hawaiian Islands Republican Women, in opposition, on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair Elefante, Vice Chair Wakai, and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. Right off, there is problem with the language in SB 1149. It states that a reported hate crime means "any reported incident regardless of whether it results in criminal charges." "As evidence or indication that bias or prejudice may have been a motivating factor." While I oppose any type of violence or any type of hate actions, there is a problem in terms of prohibiting our freedom of speech. So what one person may perceive as hate speech may, according to SB 1149, be viewed as hate, a hate crime. And then it's going to be documented in a system without even being adjudicated. So a couple of questions for the committee...
Thank you, Ms. Detwiler.
...to define what a hate crime is. I stand in strong opposition. I encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
I have Kim Corderi in opposition. Aloha and welcome.
Hi, I'm Kim Corderi. And I'm strongly opposing this bill for the very same reasons that Jamie just mentioned, that my question is, what is a hate crime? It's not definitive. It's too subjective. And I think it's just, it's leaves, it's too open. So how can you, as Jamie said, adjudicate in that? Because it's not defined. It's too open and subjective to what somebody might feel. And I think that's not a good basis. So I oppose.
Thank you. Mike Golichu, Sr., in support. Thaddeus Pham in support. Zoe Brooks Jeffers in support. Richard S. Velazquez in support. Philip Steinbacher in support. And then the following people are in opposition. Andrew Crossland, Rose Marie Valisal, J. Paulani Vendiola, Brad O'Linsey, Richard Lanford, Shawna Lanford, Lori Santiago, Catherine D. Lobindal, Bart Burford, Joelle Seashell, Dorinda Ohello, David Shorman, Terry Moore Kami, Leisha Mase, James Wallace in person. Marlese Lee, Robin Gontiano, Devin English, Sally Lee, Jeffrey Mizuno, Emerson Lau, Larry Doaklan, and Laurie Langton. That completes our list of registered testifiers on SB 1149. Anyone else that wishes to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? Yes, Senator Rhodes?
Is Michael Golichu testifying on this one?
Yes.
I mean, there's been hate crime statutes around for quite some time. The definition of a hate crime isn't really in doubt, is it?
No, no, Senator. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at the reporting of it. Because if they don't catch the perp, there's no reporting of it anywhere to the public. And that's the reason we're advocating for this bill. Because as somebody who's been the focus of several hate crimes, it doesn't go anywhere. There's no public reporting. Nobody knows about it unless they catch the person.
Understood, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Yep, welcome. Any further questions? If not, move on to our next item, which is SB 1321. This is relating to the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. First on our list is from the Office of the Public Defender, Assistant Public Defender Haley Ching. Anyone from the PD's office in support? Director Tommy Johnson, DCR. Anyone from DCR offering comments? Chair Patterson. Aloha and welcome.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and the rest of the committee members. Mark Patterson, Chair, Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. It's really been a journey since 2019, when the commission was founded. We've had three times that we had to go out and interview for oversight coordinators. The first time was in 2020, and when we were ready to give the selection to the governor, COVID hit. So we didn't even get to get higher at that time. 2022, we were able to go through the process again, and we hired Governor Ege Pick Christian Johnson. And then we just recently did another one. And Governor Green, thank you, selected Ms. Johnson again. Every two years is rough. Continuity of what we do is important. And I believe in the last two years that we've had this current oversight coordinator. And if you look at our oversight website, you can see the work that she's done. Yeah, so we're very knowing that we need more than two years to continue the project, continue the mission, and validate the purpose for the commission. We hope to extend the time that the oversight coordinator can be on the job. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep.
Kat Brady?
Good afternoon, Chair Elefante, Vice Chair Wakai, and members of the committee. Kat Brady, testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons in strong support of this measure. We really lucked out when Kristin Johnson saw that ad. She has so much experience in different facilities around the country that we could have, nobody here has that kind of background. So we're really, really lucky. About two years, you know, two years goes really fast, and there's not a heck of a lot you can actually do, fix. You know, she's faced with a big thing. My testimony in the House was, I think it should be six years or no term because the ombudsman has no term limit. And because they want continuity in that office. And that's what the community has been asking for. We want some continuity. So thank you very much for hearing this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
And I hope you pass it.
Lauren Walker, Director for Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice, in support. Carrie Ann Sharoda, ACLU, in support. Carolyn Eaton.
Aloha, Chair Elefante, Vice Chair Wakai, and members of the committee. I realize that the legislature has to use the language of the office. And all of us who are... What I'm referring to is the coordinator, is the name of the person who holds the office. And our enthusiasm for Kristin can get in the way of that. But we hope the term is extended and it needn't be associated with any particular person. I am for the language of this bill, unless you care to extend it even beyond four years.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Jeff Tomida in support. Jean Ulta in support. Diane DiMaria in support. Diane Bethel in support. Veronica Moore in support. Reverend Kyle Lovett in support. That completes our list of testifiers. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify on SB 1321? If not, members, questions? Move on to our last item on our agenda, which is SB 1341. This is relating to Energy Industry Information Reporting from HAIMA Administrator James Barrows in support. From DEBED, Director James Tokyoka in support. From the Energy Office, Mark Lick, CEO. Or anyone from the Energy Office?
I'm Captain in the Energy Office, CNN, I'm in testimony.
Okay, Mr. Kim, in testimony in support? Is your written testimony in support? Okay, thank you. I just need to repeat that because the public and people in Zoom land don't hear that. Frank Pace, testifying for Department of Law Enforcement.
Sir, Regan, we'll stand on our written testimony in support.
DLE in support. That completes our list of registered testifiers on SB 1341. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? We're going to roll straight into it. Okay, we're now going to, moving to decision-making. This is on our 315 agenda first. We'll start with SB 1364. This is Making Emergency Appropriations for Law Enforcement Personnel Costs. Hearing the testimony from the Deputy Director for the Budget and Finance Office, as they don't have the exact figures, members, I'd like to defer decision-making till Friday, February 7th, at 3:15 PM in Conference Room 225. For our next item, SB 1451 relating to Critical Infrastructure. Chair is going to recommend that we pass with amendments on page 2, line 19. amended definition to read as follows. "As suggested in the testimony from the Public First Law Center, critical infrastructure information means information provided by private entities that is not customary in the public domain and that if disclosed would reveal vulnerabilities in critical infrastructure that, if exploited, would likely result in significant disruption, destruction, or damage of or to operations, property, or facilities." On page 4, line 4, change the effective date to July 1st, 2077, and any other technical amendments. Any further discussion? If not, Vice Chair for the vote. Chair votes aye.
I vote yes. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Decore?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Our next item is SB 1452. This is relating to the Uniform Controlled Substance Act. Members, hearing further discussion from the Department of Law Enforcement, I'd like to work with the agency to come up with language. So we'll postpone decision-making till Friday, February 25th. So we'll postpone decision-making until Friday, February 7th, 2025. At 3:15 PM in Conference Room 225. Our next item relating to hate crimes, SB 1149. Chair is going to recommend that we pass with amendments on Page 5, Line 5, under Section 7. Change the effective date to July 1st, 2077. In the committee report, we're going to include the following, based on the Attorney General's testimony. This is three bullet points. I'll just read them because it's not, I'll just read the, what will contain in the committee report so that the public is aware. The AG has been working to transition the statistical crime reporting in the state of Hawaii from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, FBI. Nationwide Uniform Crime Reporting, UCR programs, traditional summary reporting system, which allows the state to collect limited data, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRS program, which is more robust system that includes hate crime data and has the ability to collect and provide circumstances and context for crimes, such as location, time of day, and whether the reported incident was attempted or completed. The AG is developing a user-friendly public dashboard that should be completed by September 30th, 2025, and will provide more transparency and accessibility to hate crimes data. NIBRS hate crime reporting is expected to eventually supersede Hawaii's current prosecutor-level reporting program and is evolving to provide the most accurate and accessible hate crime data. NIBRS training is provided by the FBI several times a year in two-day online courses and is coordinated and documented by the state UCR program staff. The training is open to all police personnel with key responsibilities for crime reporting, including support staffs such as the records and information technology personnel who generate, review, revise, verify, and report NIBRS data. The FBI is also coordinated with state UCR program to audit the police department's crime reporting data and procedures on a tri-annual basis and any other technical amendments. Any further discussion? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Knowing the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations?
No vote for me.
No vote for Decort. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Wakai. Our next item is SB 1321. This is relating to the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. On Page 1, Line 11, we're going to change four-year to three-year term and any other technical amendments and keep the date as is. Okay, any further discussion on the recommendation? Yes, Senator Fukunaga?
I actually support the longer timeframe, so I'm going to be voting with reservations. But I think this is early in the process, so looking forward to further discussion.
Okay, so noted. Any other further discussions on the recommendation? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Chair Elefante?
Aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Reservations?
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Decort?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. And for our last item is SB 1341. This is relating to Energy Industry Information Reporting. Okay, recommendation here is to pass as is. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair?
Knowing the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations? Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. I see inherent none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, this concludes our 315 agenda. We are adjourned.